Hello, hello.
Oh wow, all right, are you ready? We are recording, okay. Welcome, everybody, thank you for joining us tonight, both in person and virtually via Zoom. This is the first of two sessions that we will have as a question and answer time period, and then additionally, an in-person meet and greet time period, which we will do out in the lobby for those who are interested. And then, as a reminder, we do have that second session tomorrow night at the Reno Fire Station 11, which is on 7105 Mann Avenue from 5 to 7. So for those who couldn't participate tonight or couldn't make it out here, we wanted to give an additional opportunity for the members of Ward 5, both down here and downtown, to be able to engage with you, and then also out in Somerset, so that we're kind of dividing and conquering a little bit of that public exposure, so that you guys really have an opportunity to meet your constituents, or potential constituents, and have ways to connect with them. So to begin with, we will enter a period of introductions, which I will allow each of you three minutes to tell us, tell the constituency a little bit about yourself, who you are, and why you're interested in this position. After those three minutes, we'll move into a question series. We have five questions that have been generated off of the 20, I think 21, questions that were submitted by the public over the last four days. Of those, we really went in and grabbed the themes, because several of them were a bit duplicative, right? So there are people that are asking questions of similar in nature, so we've just kind of taken them and compiled them down into questions that are streamlined, and hopefully ways in which you guys can target what the, what the heart of the questions were that the constituents were asking. Those answers will be, I'll just ask you guys in a random order to answer the questions, and then you will still be afforded three minutes per question to address the issue. We're going to be using the timer in the room, so you will get a 30-second warning when, that's your 30-second warning to start wrapping up your comments. Don't be alarmed, just wanted to give you a heads up, because sometimes if you're not prepared, it can be a little bit shocking. After that period of time, we will do a two minutes, two minutes for closing statements. All of this should take about an hour, is what we're expecting, and then at that point, we'll go ahead and exit into the lobby, where you can meet and greet and talk to any, anyone out there who has some burning questions that maybe weren't addressed, or that we weren't able to encapsulate into these themed questions that we've come up with today. Questions? Oh, ready to go. So for the public's purpose, there is no public comment for tonight's meeting. This is, again, just a forum for the questions that were generated to be asked to the finalists that are here before you. The questions that don't get asked today, again, that's what the lobby time is for, is there will be a full hour outside, where everybody can kind of walk around and ask your, your finalists the questions that maybe weren't addressed in our themed questions that we're asking here tonight. And then, lastly, this is not a debate. So, the intent is not for either any one of you to rebut something that one of your challengers, or your, your, your fellow applicants. That's not the intent and purpose of tonight's question and answer series. So, it is intended for just our members here to get to know you guys a little bit better. All right, so, in no particular order, Mr. Goff, if you would like to start us off with your introductions.
Thank you very much, Madam City Clerk, my name is Alex Goff, I'm a proud resident here in the city of Reno. Coming here, my family and I have had the opportunity to find much opportunity. My wife manages a clinic here, a local nonprofit. I'm still finding my way professionally, but I know that the city of Reno will be where ultimately I find whatever I'm looking for. I was excited when I saw this role became available. I have a lot of optimism and hope for our community, and the direction in which we're going, and the opportunity, I think, to work with other members of the council, citizens such as everyone present here today, in person or virtually, stakeholders, our city staff, to see the direction of our future, see the direction of our city continue to go into a good future. Undoubtedly, we do have challenges, but I know that working together, we can help solve, mitigate, lower the opportunity for those damages. Thank you very much for the opportunity to discuss everything with you all today, and I'm excited and optimistic, thank you.
Elliot, if you'd like to go next.
Sure, thank you. So I'm Elliot Mallon, I am a two-time graduate of the University of Nevada. I moved to Reno for college, and I like to say that I fell in love in Reno twice, once with Reno, and then once with my wife, which is important, because I don't want to sleep on the couch tonight. But, we've lived in the ward my entire time, I've been here in Reno, and I love the ward, I've, I love the community aspect of it, and how diverse it is. Some experience for me, I have been in public policy for a long time now, so I have a litany of experience that can help and bolster the city through the Reno Municipal Code, planning, statute, and the relationships I bring, I just want to make Reno the best place to be for everyone and all of our residents, and I think that we have, as Alex said, I'm optimistic, but I think that there potentially is some challenges ahead, and unknown economic times with how we generate revenue. And I think that it's important that we, as a community, and as a city, and as a state, address that together, and I think that Reno needs to be on the forefront of addressing those concerns. I also want to make sure that we're seeing smart development, we're seeing resources brought into where we're building. An example is, I'd love to see some fresh food in the downtown area, which is, I think, currently missing. And so I'm excited to be here, like Alex said, I'm optimistic for the future of the city, I think we have a bright future ahead of us, and I'm grateful to be here with all of you, thank you.
And finally, Ms. Taylor.
Thank you very much, my name is Kathleen Taylor, thank you for being here, for taking time out of your day to be here, and thank you for being on Zoom, thank you for giving me this opportunity. I feel very grateful to be sitting up here. I think everybody has the opportunity to look at our applications and our resumes online, so, just briefly, I currently sit on the Planning Commission, I was Chair of the Planning Commission the last two years, I sit on Regional Planning Commission, and prior to that, I was on BFAK. I ran a campaign in 2012 unsuccessfully, and again, all that is available online. So I just wanted to take this time to tell you a little bit about myself. My, I was born and raised here, I'm a northern Nevada native. I have been in Reno for the last 13 to 15 years, I've raised two children here. I graduated from the University of Nevada Reno. Before, I lived in Ward 5, I lived in Ward 1, I lived in Ward 3. My first major, major public works projects was actually downtown, about 20-ish years ago, with the Retract Project, where I was lucky enough to interact with all the businesses and the folks at that time, and I would say maybe that's when I fell in love with Reno. I was pregnant with my first daughter, and the businesses, when I was walking in, were so gracious and kind, and it was just a community that I always knew I wanted to be a part of. So I'm sitting here today, because I'm, I'm very excited at the direction that Reno is going. A lot has changed in 2000, since 2012, I've been service every day since that, and I think we have a great opportunity to keep moving forward. I look forward to working with everybody in this room, and who sits up here, to make the future of Reno, where we have clean, safe, and invigorating communities, thank you.
All right, thank you. We will go ahead and move into our question section, so again, each of you will be afforded three minutes per question. And we will go ahead and rock and roll. So the first question for tonight is that, there were themes in the questions submitted by the public centered on recreation, pedestrian safety, traffic, and open space, among others. When looking at Ward 5, what are your top priorities for representing your constituents? And we'll go ahead and start with Mr. Mallon.
There we go. Thank you for that question, and I've had an interesting conversation about this yesterday, especially related around pedestrian safety. Where I live, and just so everybody is, can kind of picture it, is off of Stoker and 7th Street. Every day, I drive home, and I see somebody crossing the street in the crosswalk, and every single day, I see a car blow through that and almost hit a resident, a neighbor, a pedestrian. So, one of the first things I want to do is start addressing those problems, I want to be here, working with the colleagues, the various departments with the city, to see what we can do to enhance our public safety, our traffic safety. I know that in the university area, we've put up a lot of lights, crossing lights. I think that's a good start, but there's more to be done, maybe overhead crossing lights where they can actually be seen, and not blocked by brush and plants. When it comes to recreation, I think that we have a lot of resources within the ward. One is more of a regional park, but Rancho San Rafael is an amazing asset to our community, and trying to build up and around that, and enhance our park system, and making sure that it's clean and safe. My wife grew up in Ward 5, and there's a park right by the house she grew up in, that is falling apart, it's not the most safe park today, and so make sure that all of our infrastructure at our parks, for our children, is safe and clean, is a priority. And I want to make sure that we make, we see a safe environment for our families. Another, another big concern I have is our school zones. When we're talking about public safety, when we're talking about parks, pedestrian safety, people have been blowing through school zones, and trying to address those problems with RPD, and trying to enhance our public safety around schools, and for our children, I think is vital. Unfortunately, I think that our resources have been a little thin around that, and trying to bolster that and work with the community and community partners to do so is a top priority for me, thank you.
Ms. Taylor?
Thank you very much. In terms of my top priority for Ward 5, and, you know, Ward 5 is really close to all the other wards, and Ward 1, you walk across the street, you're right there, so as a city as a whole, public safety is the number one thing, for me, it's the number one priority, that's what the city is responsible, one of the city's top priorities. When we look at the prior, the tiers, and the priority tiers for City Council, that's one of the top ones. In terms of pedestrian safety and traffic, through my professional experience, I've been very lucky to be part of Vision Zero, Zero Fatalities. I worked on the Strategic Highway Safety Plan when it first came out, maybe 15, 15 years ago, so I was part of those working groups. During my time on the Strategic Highway Safety Plan, there, we were able to put a mural down on Mayberry, as part of Zero Fatalities, we worked with all the local schools, and it was part of the "I Have a Dream" campaign, "Don't Kill a Dream." We asked the students what their dreams were, we put it right near a crosswalk, we brought attention to that crosswalk, so, that was one of the, I guess, more fun things that I got to do, we also got involved in traffic safety, there were engineering, EMS, all the five E's as part of traffic safety. Open space, I sit on the Planning Commission, and the Regional Planning Commission, and open space is something that we don't have an abundance of, and we need to keep it as open space. There was a project that came over in Ward 2, where they wanted to take, the developer had planned to take some open space and change it, and I voted against that, and I believe all of my colleagues voted against that, that were on the commission, so we have some developments out in Ward 5, where they're actually creating more open space, which is always a positive thing in my mind, it's a resource that we can't get back. And I think that answers most of the questions, thank you so much.
Mr. Goff?
Thank you very much. First and foremost, affordable housing. I heard recently from someone in our community, so, for full transparency, I'm 37 years old, and so, people like me, my age cohort, not being able to have the opportunity to be able to attain reasonably priced housing, and/or people that we understand that are unhoused, that are on that track back to where they can be, you know, out of that situation, what I hear as a constraint oftentimes is access to mental health services, and also access to attainable or affordable housing. So I think that's first and foremost, an important priority, representing this war, is making sure that homeownership continues to be accessible here in this community, and also making sure that those who are unhoused have opportunities to get into a place to where they can start to put, you know, items back together. Secondly, when we talk about public safety, we're about to appoint a new police chief for the city of Reno, so ensuring that our principles are reflected as we, as we navigate that opportunity together. I want to see someone who looks at community policing, how engaged are you with the communities that you're policing? Also, ensuring mental health of police officers. I know that as an individual, in my workspaces, I know that the pandemic and issues related coming out of the pandemic has put a stress on a lot of our families, and a lot of us as individuals. Well, imagine then, if you then had a public-facing role, where you were dealing in environments where you saw stress, or you saw, you know, unimaginable things, on top of everything else, day-to-day life. So making sure that our police officers and our firefighters have access to mental health services is very important in my mind. And frankly, writ large, right, our entire community, we, we can do better as a state, we know about access to mental health. And lastly, what I would say is, is, is we have resources here in the city, that we better, that, that we need to better harness, and, and better, you know, make available. So we have a river in our community, also at the university, so in linking in the university to downtown, linking in the university with the rest of the community, and make sure that we don't have people graduate from our university and then leave, and so making sure that they have the opportunity to start small businesses. If you have a dream here in the city of Reno, city of Reno should be where you're able to achieve it. And so, making sure that kids from the university, or students, graduates from the university are able to achieve their dreams here in the city of Reno, if that looks like opening up a small business, if that looks like just engaging with whatever businesses that we're able to cultivate here in the community. Those are important priorities for me here in Ward 5, thank you.
Awesome, thank you. Our second question for the evening is, housing is top of mind for our community, including affordable housing, and how's, and the housing shortage in general. How do you plan on contributing to a solution for this situation? So we'll go ahead and start with Ms. Taylor.
Thank you for the question. Again, I have been lucky enough to be on the Planning Commission, and the Regional Planning Commission, and I'm very excited that at our last Regional Planning Commission, we were able to take some Tier 3 land, and create, change that to Tier 2 land, and within that Tier 2 land, there's a new affordable housing development that's going to be coming with over 200 units. So that is a very real project that's going to be coming to our community, so I'm very excited about that. Part of the affordable housing solution is we need more inventory, we have to bring on more housing. I, on BFAK, we, Building Enterprise Funding Advisory Committee, we can, I don't want to say predict, but when we look at the amount of building permits that are coming in for single-family housing, we can sort of gauge how much more housing is going to be coming on. In the next quarter, I think it's going to be very important to look at those numbers, and see where that multifamily, multifamily is going to be at. Last BFAK committee, it was pretty, it was pretty stable, and things were still coming in, but I think we're going to be able to predict what we can expect to see in the next, next quarter. Again, I think we have a lot of programs, we have a lot of resources of the city of Reno, but it comes down to, we need more inventory of all housing, we need a mix of housing, because it'll, it'll trickle down, affordable housing too. I know there's some concerns in the downtown, we're getting more housing down there, we're going to have between, I don't know, 5,000 or 7,000 units in the next 10 years, possibly, residential coming in, some of that's going to be workforce, or workforce housing, and hopefully we see more affordable housing there too. Thank you.
Mr. Goff?
Thank you very much. As I had said earlier, affordable housing certainly is on the top of mind for me, and certainly on the top of mind for a lot of community members. So affordable housing, there is a legal definition that relates to how much money an individual makes, but, you know, I like to talk about affordable and attainable, attainable, I think, more of, of a new family here to the community, being able to access a home, and oftentimes, what I hear from families is, you know, concerns about economic recession, and driving down the home, the home value, and so, independent of that happening, where home values see a drastic reduction, which I would not necessarily be in favor of seeing a drastic reduction in home value today, but making sure that there's creative units to where home, where you're able to come in and buy in at different levels, right? So that means different types of housing, whether it be townhouses or studios, making available properties for people to be able to own, because, as we know, homeownership is the number one way most Americans build wealth in this country. And so making sure that we have inventory of houses that reflects our community, and making sure it's all across the city, and making sure that you, you can choose to live, you know, hopefully ideally closer to where you And so making sure that we have inventory of, of houses that reflects our community and making sure it's all across the city and making sure that um you, you can choose to live, um, you know, hopefully ideally closer to where you, where you work, where you play, um, is very important as well. But making sure the inventory is available and making sure that you're working with stakeholders to hear their concerns, you know? Uh, there's always administrative concerns on the front end about processes, about payments. So making sure that you're able to address those needs as well, so that you're able to get those inventory into the community is important.
All right. Mr. Mallon?
Thank you. Um, about six years ago, I had the opportunity to get the house I'm in today, and I was very fortunate for that. The value of that house for today versus then has nearly doubled. Um, I know, as Alex said, I, I'm thirty. Um, for me, uh, buying a larger house, a family home, is almost unattainable. And I know that's not just me, there's others like me, and it's, and it's not just people within my age range. So I think it's important to address this. We have a critical shortage of uh housing in every sector. Uh, today I had the opportunity to do a tour of an affordable housing uh project that was going on, and the way that they were doing that and they were um satisfying that demand was through working with regional partners and state partners to make that happen. Uh, part of that, they received ARPA funding to do. And so making sure that we can work across our partners in our region uh and our state uh together as a team, I think is vital. We have to be a team. Um, I, I love the city of Reno, but I also love our sister city of Sparks. We have to work together, we have to work with the county, we have to work with every agency possible to address this as a region. Um, we need to uh increase our housing supply across all sectors, like you had mentioned, and uh the only way to do that is we have to do single-family, we have to do multifamily, we have to do uh larger residential units. And sometimes we have to also look at how we build up and addressing that. In our downtown area, we have the, a unique opportunity of some vacant buildings, um, and how do we work with those uh current building owners to change that into housing that is uh affordable as we move to the future? Um, and we must, again, this, we have to do this as a team. Uh, that means including the community, uh having community input to make sure that all of the housing and the development that we're bringing in is safe, that's, for number one, is safe um and affordable. We have to make sure that there are necessary resources to respond to um any problem that might arise in that community, um and making sure that we can do that adequately across the region. And so I, I appreciate this question, I think this is vital. Um, I heard from uh some students yesterday about the cost of housing at the university. It's about uh seventeen hundred, eighteen hundred dollars for an apartment where you share it. When I was there, and again, I'm, I'm thirty, when I was there, it wasn't that long ago, and my apartment was six hundred dollars. So you see the cost um that these students are facing is unacceptable, and it's not just them, it's also our most vulnerable. And so we have to work across every uh part of this to make sure we address it in a healthy and safe manner. So, thank you.
Thank you. All right. Moving on to question number three. Reno residents, like any other community, have differing beliefs and perspectives. How will you seek to listen and understand all constituent needs and concerns? And Mr. Mallon will go ahead and start with you.
Great, thank you. Um, it's one of my favorite questions, uh, because I think it's so important that we're able to work together. Uh, I can't ever guarantee that uh I'm going to agree with you. Um, that my two colleagues up here, I've, I've known them both for a very long time and we're friends. I can't say that we always agree on every issue, but we can have a respectful conversation and listen to each other, because I think a very valuable tool sometimes is just hearing one another and what the issue is that you're facing. Um, and again, I, I guarantee every single person in this room, we, we disagree on something, but we also have something we agree on. So how do we bridge those gaps and how do we listen to one another and bring everybody to the table? This is a, a, this is a team, right? Whoever is selected for this position represents Ward Five, and so we have to be able to listen to Ward Five. We have to be able to listen to the residents and seek that input. One of the first things I want to do is have a listening session, not a town hall, but a listening session. I want to know what's going on and wha, what, what am I missing? What are you seeing that I can help improve on? Um, and I think that that's something that has to be carried on every single month, because oftentimes we forget in uh these kind of positions that our first job is to listen and represent. And so um I strive to do that. I never want to start at no with anybody in this room. Um, whenever somebody raises a concern and brings it to me, my goal is to start at maybe and then get to yes, and then work with you to get to yes. How do we make that happen? How does this become a healthy discussion uh for everybody and make Reno and the ward a better place for everybody? Uh, so I, I appreciate this question uh a lot. It's a, it's a core part of my philosophy within what I already do within policy. So, thank you.
Mr. Goff?
Thank you. I, I appreciate the question as well. It's almost disappointing it has to be asked, though, that people feel like they're not being heard from, or people feel like they're not being listened to, and people want to make sure through this process that the person who is eventually appointed will know how to listen to people. And so what I would say is this, is that I always like to tell a story about my time in the Marine Corps where um there was a colleague that I had who grew up in Puerto Rico, he spoke Spanish. Eventually, he uh came to mainland to go to boot camp, and everyone he had encountered throughout the entire process spoke Spanish to him until he got to boot camp. And so he quickly had to learn English, but it was through the drill instructors um version of English, which was very harsh in tone. Uh, the words that they used weren't always the best words uh to use, especially in polite company. Uh, and so he had to navigate through that and eventually uh learned how to speak English in a way that wasn't uh like a drill instructor. And I say that because even that person deserved to be listened to. And earl, earlier at the city council meeting, um, I went over my story and my background, where I came from. My family uh was vulnerable. Um, I came from a mother who was raising three kids as a, as a single mom, and uh there was a time where I didn't believe that I should be listened to. I didn't think I was smart enough to be able to discuss these issues. So recognizing, I think, the value and worth in everyone, and also appreciating that while someone may come to you with, with a lot of passion, or frankly, maybe because they learned how to speak from Marine Corps drill instructors, uh that they still uh have the right and deserve to be listened to. I think that's important, and I think that this is something that we do every day in our lives, right? Um, I know, and Elliot said this earlier, you know, Ellie and I uh we're, we're friends, and uh of course, we don't agree on everything, but we always have mutual respect, and I think that's important to start with people from is mutual respect. Thank you.
Ms. Taylor?
Thank you. I think that was a really good comment with respect. I think as long as we're respectful and we're communicating, we can get to where we need to be. So I, I really, I really liked what you said there, Alex. Um, so as far as listening and understanding constituents' needs, we have a lot of tools in our community. Um, we have the NABs, almost everybody has an HOA. I plan on, if I were selected, to be very, very active in the listening and communication part. I actually have the time in my life right now to dedicate to this position. Um, and I know it's going to take a lot of time. What I do right now is I, on the planning commission and on regional, we usually have a developer side, and then we have um the city of Reno or the regional teams' perspective of it, and we're given a whole bunch of information. I meet with both sides all the time. I meet with developers, I meet with residents, I meet with the community, I do research, I try and find out more, more about the, the info, or the issue. I read this, um, sta, I, I hate saying staff, I'm sorry. I read the team reports that we get from the city of Reno, um, and I look at that and I think it's very important to do that. I do a lot of facilitation in my job. I work between contractors and owners, and I think it's important also to understand that not everybody communicates the same way. I am very much pick up the phone, call me, please. I will meet with you, I'll sit down and talk with you. If you prefer email, that's fine, we can do that too. There's lots of different ways to communicate. Um, I've, everybody has our phone number and our email now. I encourage everybody to reach out and ask us questions. And I, I said this earlier this week, I, I've received maybe two or three emails from people, so um, or, or a call. I'm accessible, I'm available, I want to know what's going on there. I know that I don't know everything, and I'm willing to listen and hear every side of the story. And, and there are a lot of things, especially on the planning commission and regional planning, that I don't understand and I have to ask questions. So that's got, got to be part of the discussion too. I don't know what I don't know, right? I mean, we've heard that before, and I'm willing to find out. I'm willing to do the work and research and make sure I have a good understanding. And when it comes down to it, s- sometimes on planning commission, it's hard because there's findings that we have to make that aren't necessarily relative to what's, um, what some of the concerns are. So I always try to address the public concerns and the emails that we get, so even if it's not part of the decision that we make, people understand that they're being listened to and they're being heard. Thank you.
Question number four. What is one city code or policy you would like to see changed and why? And we'll go ahead and start with Ms. Taylor.
Well, this one wasn't upfront. We didn't get to see this one first. Um, this is a great question. I am going to tie this back to affordable housing, and I wish I could take credit for this, but um I, I heard it in a discussion with my fellow commissioners on the planning commission. Um, if there was a way to make affording, affordable housing, the application process easier and streamline it and move, because there's a, I believe time is money. Um, and if there was a way to take those applications, move them to the front of the line, reduce some of the costs associated with it, I think that would be a great, great idea. Now, saying that, I don't know all the logistics that would go into something like that, so Community Development Department, don't, don't be too upset with me, but if there was, I, I think I would like to see something like that in the near future. Thank you.
Mr. Mallon?
Yeah, I was afraid of this question too, because there's way too many friends and they're different departments. Um, and it's really hard to pick one. Um, and I've had the pleasure of working on quite a few, but I think Kathleen's right. I think we have to address um our affordable housing and how do we get through that process? How do we do it as quickly as possible? There's been too many times where I've come to city council, um, and this has happened to me, um, and it's, it's not a, a knock on the members currently, I respect uh their dedication and the questions they're asking. But I've, I've come to council and I've had issues um punted to the next month because we had to change something, and then the next month after that, and it takes a long time. I think I went through six, seven months before I was finally able to get an ordinance change in um with the municipal code. And when we can uh address these things, especially when it comes to affordable housing upfront and early, and cut that red tape and reduce that cost and make sure again that this housing is done in a healthy and safe manner, um, we can benefit as a society and as a city and as a region. And I think that's the first and foremost vital part of that. Um, I, I absolutely agree with Kathleen.
Um, city code or policy? And so, but I, so I, I identified uh early some priorities that I would have as a Ward Five city council member. And so acknowledging uh upfront that I'm not as familiar with city code and policies here in the city of Reno, I would look forward to working with people that knew uh that information more intimately, to make sure that we're able to provide uh uh public safety and make sure that we're able to look at uh fire response, be able to look at affordable housing, um, to be able to look at those priorities that we have and work with uh people who are more knowledgeable about city code and policy, to make sure that we're able to implement that in a smart way. Um, that's what I would like to see.
Question number five, and we'll go ahead and start with you, Mr. Goff. What do you believe to be the most important issues facing city of Reno, and how would you go about addressing them?
Uh, thank you very much for the question. And so um I had said earlier about public safety, uh, I think that is an incredibly important issue. Affordable housing is an incredibly important issue. And um I think the way that you address them is that you bring people together. Ultimately, I think that um if you have, if you notice and observe a problem, um, that you make sure that you're bringing people to the table to make sure that you're properly able to address them. We referenced earlier the different opportunities for citizen input and making sure that you're leveraging those opportunities to hear directly from the people about um how certain issues affect them and uh making sure that you're working with um city staff, make sure you're working with the other council members to uh see that you're able to effect, effectively address these problems, because uh the reality is, is that if you're in front of a room, uh simply um, you know, speaking loudly about a particular issue, um probably not going to be effective in that role. Uh, being able to bring to the, people to the table, making sure you're able to listen to all voices, I think, is how you effectively address issues. Thank you.
Ms. Taylor?
I think um growth is going to be a huge concern for us, probably always. How do we address that? We need to make sure that we have the resources to support and the services to make sure that we can support that growth. One of the things that I am a hundred percent behind, um, that I'm seeing coming online that is very exciting to me, when I ran in two thousand twelve, it was a challenge. And I think we're finally getting to some solutions, and I am so proud of all of the people that are coming to ta, to the table for this, is um the regional coordination of services. I think that is huge to have, to start having those discussions, and that's gonna, that's gonna be the start to impact everything that we do for public safety. And it has taken years to get to this point, and it's such a huge accomplishment to um all of the city team, to our managers, to our regional partners. Um, just very proud that this is, to be part of this community. And like I said, the growth um is something that we're all going to have to deal, deal with. How do we, I said this the other day, everybody wants responsible growth. Well, what is responsible growth to me might not be the same as, as Elliot over here, but we need to make sure that we're having the conversation and most importantly, that we have the resources to address that, whether it's, you know, water, public safety, air quality, all of those things. That's the city's job. Thank you.
Thank you. So it seems like we're at five forty-two. Oh, sorry.
I know, I just, I know, I'm short. That's why I chose the-
I am too, we're, we're right here together.
I know, that's why I chose the, the woman's pillow, so I can be a little bit taller.
Sorry, Mr. Mallon, go ahead.
It's okay. That was funny. Um, I, I, I agree with um both Alex and Kathleen. I think that we have to have a conversation uh when we're, about um both growth, development, and everything else that goes along with that, small businesses, uh how do we allow small businesses to flourish? Uh, our community has diversified better than mostly the rest of the state, which is fantastic, but with that, we've seen some challenges with that growth. Uh, conversely, we've set ourselves up better to uh uh face the next economic recession, which gets me to a big point. Uh, the way that we fund our cities in Nevada is problematic, um, because we were so heavily reliant on property tax. Um, and I know that's not always the popular thing to talk about, but we are, we're, we're heavily reliant on it, and every time a recession comes around, our, our revenue plummets in the cities. And what suffers from that is our public safety in our schools, that's how we fund those as well. And so I would like to see us as a city, uh, address that. How do we change that? How do we uh diversify our tax base or increase that revenue so that way we can fund our fire department? Um, it was only a few years ago that the fire uh station by my parents' house was finally filled. Uh, it's been empty since about two thousand and seven, and no city in this state has um recovered from the great recession, not a single one. Only one city, oh, there's a fly up here, I apologize. Um, only one city in the entire state has returned to pre-two thousand and seven departments, and it's not the city of Reno, and that city hasn't even fully funded them. And so it's not a matter of if, it's a matter of when the next economic downturn happens and what, what happens to our revenue then? What happens to the city? What happens to the resources that um are there to take care of you? Uh, fire, dispatch, police, uh, when we're talking about all of this stuff that we're talking about growth, education, schools, it's all reliant on our revenue stream, and the city, the state has to address that, uh, or allow the city to address it, uh, since we're a modified Dillon's rule state. Um, and I, I think that it's uh the most important issue that we are facing. Um, I know that's not always the most popular thing to say, but it's the honest truth. Um, and we have to have the hard conversation about how to do that. And so that's one thing that I, I, I plan on doing, uh, in this role or not, is trying to uh address that. that, so that way our citizens, our fellow neighbors, our Renoites, are all safe and our education and our schools are the best that they can be. And making sure everybody's part of that conversation, our neighbors, all of you should be part of that conversation and how we fix these problems. So thank you for that.
Thank you. Given that our members that are on Zoom can't engage in the public meet and greet portion since we will be turning off the Zoom and exiting the room, if there is anybody that is in the Zoom meeting that would like to ask a specific question, I would like to go ahead and ask you to raise your hand at this time, and we will go ahead and move you over into the meeting so that you can ask a question.
No one has raised their hand yet.
Okay, so with that, we will go ahead and move into closing comments as it's 5:46, and that will give us just about enough time to get this wrapped up and allow you all time to transition out into the lobby. So we will go ahead and start with you, Mr. Mallon.
Thank you. I appreciate this. I appreciate everybody taking the time to participate in this. I appreciate those on Zoom, those following on social media, every single resident that is participating in this in some fashion. I know that there are a lot of residents that said they wish that this was a special election. I understand that, I empathize with them. And personally, I would rather talk to my neighbors, it's easier to talk to a lot of people than the council. So I thank everybody for participating in this. I think that the city, the council is going to make a vital choice for this seat, and I think we have three very qualified people up here that care deeply about Ward Five, and that makes me excited. And I'm excited to see with whoever, again, I hope it's me, you know, that's the reason I wouldn't have done this, but I hope that whoever it is takes the time to listen, to hear the concerns of the ward, to hear what the residents have to say, address the hard issues, and make sure that everybody's at the table. And I look forward to being at that table no matter what and making this the best community for every citizen and every resident, to make it the safest, cleanest, and best educated, and bridging that gap for every single resident. So again, thank you, everybody, for participating.
Mr. Goff?
Thank you for everyone's time tonight. It's, I look through things oftentimes through where I come from, my background, my experience. And what I know is, is that, growing up how I grew up, seeing my mother raise three children as a single mom, seeing all the things that she went through, recognizing that there are members of our community that are vulnerable, on the cusp of vulnerability, people who today may have a home, tomorrow may not, recognizing that city of Reno is literally where the rubber hits the road, and making sure that through this appointment process that someone comes out of it that reflects the changing face of the city of Reno, making sure they have the experience, the background, a variety of, a variety of issues related to, you know, I remember going through the city of Reno's Citizens Institute and learning about how they repair pipes, and I found that process so interesting and recognizing just the complexity and the scope of all the things that the city does, and recognizing that working together with members of council, you can make someone's day-to-day life better in a number of ways, but at the pipe level. Recently, I ran for Assembly, and it was interesting knocking on doors, because oftentimes, you would hear about issues related to, you know, the street, snow plowing, or you would hear about issues related to lights or pedestrian safety or traffic, and recognizing that those are city issues and recognizing the importance of bringing background, principles, and experience of this role is something that's very exciting to me. So thank you for taking the time to come listen to me, and I look forward to talking with you all. Thank you.
And Ms. Taylor?
Thank you. Thank you to my colleagues for being here. Thank you for being here and thank you for being engaged. Thank you for being part of this community, everybody that's sitting here, everybody that's online, everybody that submitted questions, that's important, working together. I like where our city is going. I like the direction that we're headed. I want to be part of that. I have the time, I have the knowledge, I have the dedication and the passion to make clean, safe, and vibrant communities. That's my goal. That's all I want, that's all we all want. I'm pleased to be here with you tonight, with everybody else here tonight. You know my background, you can read it online. I would encourage everybody to reach out, call us, talk to us. This isn't an election process, but I think we're all very, very accessible. That's a great thing about our government, too, here in Reno. Our leaders are so accessible and available, and I make this commitment to you. I will meet or talk with anybody I possibly can between now and next Wednesday. I'm available on the weekends, I have no Labor Day plans. So, again, thank you for being engaged in our community, and I look forward to talking to you afterwards.
Awesome, thank you so much. And so I, too, I think in wrapping, would like to just say thank you for those of you who came down to City Hall tonight to join us in this question and answer series. And additionally to those virtually, thank you all for being here with us. To our three applicants, the next stages of this process, obviously, are tonight and tomorrow night, we're continuing on with our question and answer series for those constituents to engage. And then on Wednesday, September 7th, we will be doing our finalist interviews, which are a live public meeting here in City Hall chambers. So again, with that process, what I would suggest or what I would recommend and ask is that our public continues to engage. So thank you for being here tonight, but continue, like, give us the feedback, submit your public comments. If there's something that you have questions or needs about, continue to provide that feedback to our Reno City Council so that they can be asking thoughtful questions from our Ward Five constituents and from the city of Reno constituency. Something that I would like to note is, of the 20 responses, about 63% of them were Ward Five constituents, which I think is amazing. So thank you for being engaged in this process. It's incredibly important, and our council members, they really do value that input from the residents. So with that, if there's no final thoughts or words, we're going to go ahead and wrap our virtual hybrid question and answer session tonight, and we will transition to the lobby here shortly, where you all can meet the Ward Five finalists. Thank you.